Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Monday study session of the Pierce County Council. It is Monday, June 17th, 2024. The time is 11:01 a.m. All members are present except for Vice Chair Campbell and Councilmember Morrell. Both are excused. I bring this to item number two, review of the June 18th, 2024 council meeting agenda. Mr. Cox, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman of members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff. The you have in front of you the amended meeting agenda for tomorrow, June 18th, 2024. The meeting will occur at three o'clock here in Tacoma, here in our chambers at the courthouse on 9:30 Tacoma Avenue South. We have two changes to the previously adopted agenda. The first is under approval of minutes. You'll be adding, you'll be approving the minutes for May 28th's council meeting. And then there's an addition of a message from the executive providing transmitting an ordinance that was signed on June 13th. That's 2024-523 S, which is amending section 4.48020 of the Pierce County Code Special Revenue. So those are your additions to the council meeting. As you'll recall, from our previous review, you have under consent agenda, a resolution to confirm an appointment. You have action on grant awards. And you have a proclamation recognizing June 19th as Juneteenth. You have one resolution extending the expiration date of a conference of plan to end homelessness implementation advisory board. And you have an ordinance that amends chapter 1420 of Pierce County Code. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there questions about tomorrow's amended meeting agenda? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Cox. Ms. Merrick, for resolution 168, we have a council amendment, and we'll ask you to brief it.
Certainly, Chairman Olo. For the record, Lee Beth Merrick, council staff. Tomorrow, you will have an amendment to resolution 2024-168, which is the resolution extending the expiration date of the Conference of Plan to End Homelessness Implementation Advisory Board. I believe you have a copy of amendment in your packet. So the amendment clarifies the expiration of the Conference of Plan to End Homelessness Implementation Advisory Board, which I'll refer to as the I A B. It just adds some additional language that states that the expiration date is extended until the council determines a successor body to oversee the county's homelessness work is fully operational. Next, it requires the Human Services Department to regularly provide progress reports to the I A B and to actively seek feedback from the I A B on the progress reports. So you'll see that new language was added to section two where it's shaded. Next, it provides additional directives to the I A B. So that's in section three of the amendment. You'll see that new directives were added. Sub A, assess the county's progress towards implementing the plan as well as identifying priority areas for implementation and recommendations for improving implementation progress. B, review the information in the progress reports to determine if the progress reports accurately capture the activities and outcomes to date according to the intent of the plan and identify any recommendations for improvement. C, evaluate the format of the progress reports to ensure the information is presented in a manner that is easy for the public to understand, accessible and prominently posted on a county website for public review. And D, identify recommendations for regularly reporting to the public the county's progress towards achieving functional zero. The next piece of the amendment modifies the requirements for the Human Services Department to report to council. You'll see that in section four of the amendment. So the department's directed beginning December 1st, 2024 and semiannually thereafter to submit a report to the council that summarizes the feedback that was received from the I A B and the actions they've taken regarding the items that the board was directed to address in section three. Lastly, the report must detail the department's progress and identify solutions to any barriers toward implementing the recommendations that the board provided. Lastly, a new section is added, section five, that directs the Human Services Department to work with the I A B. They shall be consulted on any county issued competitive procurements for homeless services programs or projects. It then describes what consulted should mean. So that it means that the I A B should be included in the Application Evaluation Committee for any of these county issued competitive procurements, as well as the I A B shall be the advisory body for determining and approving funding recommendations for any county issued competitive procurements for homeless services programs for projects.
Thank you, Ms. Merrick. Are there questions about council amendment number one that will be before the body tomorrow? The resolution again extends the Implementation Advisory Board and clarifies its roles and responsibilities. And I just wanted to also indicate the intention here is to keep the Implementation Advisory Board continuing to do advice and counsel as stated until such time the council is ready to replace the Implementation Advisory Board with a future advisory body. And in my mind, the work to determine that will happen through the Unified Regional Approach work that is being led by Councilmember Hitchens and the Office of the County Council. So through that, that months-long process, I think coming out the other side, one of the many things we will better understand is what does advisory services to the homelessness response system really look like for the for the long term? And so in the in the interim, keeping the Implementation Advisory Board that we set up in early 2023, 2022, in early 2022, keeping keeping them going until we figure out what the long-term plan is, is where we're going here. So are there any other questions? Okay, this is for final action tomorrow. Thank you, Ms. Merrick. For the record, Councilmember Morrell has joined us. We're at grant authorization requests, and we have two today. Mr. Bookie will take up the Nisqually Indian Tribe of Brighton Creek Culvert at Harts Lake Road first.
Thank you very much, Chairman Olo. Paul Bookie, council staff. This is project number 462, Brighton Creek Culvert at Harts Lake Road. This is just north of the Nisqually River in the southern portion of the county. This is with the, it is a federal indirect grant. The granting agency is actually the Nisqually Tribe. The Brighton Creek Culvert at Harts Lake Road will eliminate a fish passage barrier impeding passage to ESA-listed steelhead and Chinook salmon, as well as co-salmon, pink salmon, chum salmon, and coastal cutthroat trout. Replacing the culvert will provide access to two miles of fish habitat, including half a mile of high-quality spawning and rearing habitat on Brighton Creek. They are, we are submitting this to the Nisqually Tribe of Indians who have received a federal grant for construction of the project. Brighton Creek is a highly ranked culvert on the county's culvert priority, and the project is important to both the county and the tribe. And so the grant amount is $4,500,000. The match amount is $1,750,000. It is the funding match is identified as swim funds, surface water management funds. And Ms. Rebecca Lee from our Planning and Public Works Department is available to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bookie. Ms. Lee, good morning. Do you have anything to add on behalf of the department?
No, not right now, but I was wondering if Sarah was able to give like a few sentences about the project as well. This is the, Sarah is the project manager for the project.
Well, thank you. Sarah, thank you for being with us.
Yeah, thank you, council members, for the opportunity to talk about Brighton Creek Culvert Replacement Project. We're very excited to be able to partner with the Nisqually Tribe and are looking forward to getting this important culvert updated for fish. The proposed project is to put in a 42-foot spanned arch culvert, which will replace the smaller culvert that is 100% fish blockage. So we're really looking forward to this partnership with the Pala, with the Nisqually Tribe. And thank you very much for your time to talk about this project today.
Thank you. Questions by council members? We'll begin with Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Sarah, pertaining to the match, you are gonna, the match is a million dollars out of surface water management. Was that a budgeted item? Or are you having to pull that out of your budget to make that match?
We had money set aside for the design work, and we've already spent about $500,000 on the preliminary design work and efforts that we've put towards this project. And we anticipate spending another $500,000 to finalize design, and that was budgeted. The construction funds were where we were lacking, so that's what this pass-through money from the Nisqually Tribe will provide us with.
Okay, so you you will get credit towards the match on the design monies that have been spent to date?
Yes, all the monies we've already spent and anticipate spending should cover us for any of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Sarah, I think I have two questions. Can you explain differently the source of the federal grant?
This is a NOAA grant.
It's a NOAA grant to the Nisqually Tribe?
It is. It's NOAA grant, the Fish Barrier Removal Grant.
Thank you. And Sarah, do you know how many fish blockages downstream from this project site are there in the system?
This is the first culvert on the system. This is very close to the mouth with the Nisqually, so this is the first barrier that the fish would run into as they try to travel up Brighton Creek.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any. This will be on tomorrow's consent agenda for consideration. Let's move to, thank you both for being here. Let's move to the State Home Energy Assistance Program.
Is a Washington State Department of Commerce has released funding from the Climate Commitment Account to provide low-income Pierce County households located outside of Tacoma with energy bill assistance. The Home Energy Assistance Program, also known as the HEAP program, income eligibility is increased to include households with incomes up to 200% of the federal poverty level compared to an income limit of 150% of FPL. This runs for one year. The grant amount is $1,267,803. They will require two additional staff persons, so administration allowed on that is $285,000. I would note, just as aside, from what I could find, the federal poverty level for an individual is $15,060 for a household with two individuals, and it'd be a little over $20,000. And with four individuals, it'd be $31,200. So that gives you, that's the, that's the current poverty line. Ms. Trish Crocker from our Human Services Department is here to answer your questions.
Thank you. Ms. Crocker, good morning. Do you have anything to add on behalf of the department?
I just wanted to say that the two positions will be limited duration, given the short nature of this grant. However, if this becomes a recurring grant, that may be switched.
So those two staff members do not exist yet? They're yet to be hired?
They are yet to be hired. The positions are yet to be approved based on this contract being executed.
Thank you. Questions or comments about this request? Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you. In addition to staff, are there dollars within this grant to help with marketing this opportunity to to households?
Outreach is a line item in in this, as well as the actual enrollment and paperwork part, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? To the best of your knowledge, Ms. Crocker, we see the funding sources from the Climate Commitment Account. These are already secured revenues from the Climate Commitment Act. These are not future dollars. Is that your understanding?
These are secured as soon as the council approves this grant. We will be sending it up to the Executive's Office to sign because the Commerce is actually asking for this to be signed and back to them by the 20th of June.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands at this time. This grant request will be on tomorrow's consent agenda for consideration as well. Thank you, Ms. Crocker.
Thank you.
Item number three is review of committee agendas for the week. Mr. Cox?
Yes, Chairman Olo, members of the council, Jeff Cox, council staff, you have in front of you the amended meeting schedule for June 17th through the 21st, 2024. First up, Monday, we already had the Rules and Operations Committee meeting. We are in today's study session. At 1:30 later today, Community Development and Environmental Community will be considering two, two items. The first is 2024-528, amending chapter 17(c)(60) of Pierce County Code. That's not a change. You've got also a development, transfer development rights briefing, and then there is a new item, Critical Areas Regulation, Shoreline Master Program Integration Briefing, and that'll be by Lauren Lemister, Assistant Director of Planning and Public Works. At Tuesday, you have the Health and Human Services Committee meeting starting at 9:30 in the morning. There's no change to that agenda. You'll be getting healthcare authority state updates. And there are two proposals, R2024-172, which approves homeless housing program funding, and R2024-173, which approves Peterson Taxpayer Accountability account funding. There is a change to the date of final council action on the second one, and that is moving it from July 2nd, 2024 to June 25th, 2024. At noon, you have your study session, three o'clock, your council meeting, and Wednesday, the office is closed for the Juneteenth holiday. I did have an answer.
Are there questions for Mr. Cox about the meeting schedule for the duration of the week? I don't see any. There's one committee amendment that is coming forward in committee tomorrow morning. Ms. Merrick to brief.
Thank you, Chairman Olo. Resolution 2024-172, which approves the 2425 homeless housing program funding recommendations will be heard publicly in Health and Human Services tomorrow. Councilmember Hitchens plans to offer a technical amendment to that proposal, which you'll see section one of the proposal references the special revenue funds, which funds the program. So currently, it references that Housing and Homeless Fund, as well as the Homeless Document Recording Fee Fund. We did receive a clarification from the department that no homeless document recording fee funds were used for the program this year. So it strikes the language that references the homeless document recording fee fund.
Thank you. Ms. Merrick, when we say homeless document recording fee fund, we mean the local dollars that are collected, not state document recording fee fund dollars that come to local government to do homelessness services. Is that correct?
Correct. So my understanding is that there are two special revenue funds within our code in the budget. One is the Housing and Home, or Housing and Homeless Fund. That is where the Department of Commerce, all their funding comes, and that is their homeless document recording fee. And then the county has a special revenue fund for the county's local homeless document recording fee.
To the best of your knowledge, and I, I'm sorry for not asking you to be prepared for this. To the best of your knowledge, how mu, how much is sitting in the local homeless document recording fee fund?
I'll have to confirm the total revenue. I do know off the top of my head, in the council's 2425 budget, there was 11 and a half million that was appropriated specifically for what's called other services or grants. And that's typically the money that would be awarded through the Housing and Homeless or some competitive process that pays for other things like salaries and other items that the department uses to implement their housing and homelessness plan. So I'll confirm that number off the top of my head. I'm thinking 20, but I will confirm because I know it's quite a bit of fun balance.
Thank you. So this is a really important point for committee members tomorrow morning. When we hear the the department's proposal for the Housing and Homelessness Fund, we'll see a whole bunch of projects being requested for funding. And it's important to keep in mind that, to the best of my knowledge, and I think we just heard from council staff's knowledge, there's a lot of need out there. There's, we're not be able to fund everything that has been requested. As, as, as usual in competitive grant programs, we're not able to meet the full need with the available revenue. Important point, there's 11 and a half million dollars or so, the details will will come. There's 11 and a half million dollars of local document recording fee revenue that has not been assigned yet to a need. That's my understanding. We'll, we'll confirm. Does that make sense? We'll discuss this more in Health and Human Services Committee, but one of the things you'll hear in committee that I anticipate, I previewed the the presentation that was in the packet, will hear there's a lot more need than there is revenue. There's 11 and a half million dollars in local document recording fee funds that have not been suggested to be spent yet. More to come tomorrow. Thank you, Ms. Merrick. Okay, we're at item number four, discussion of administrative items. Ms. Murray, good morning.
Good morning. Julie Murray, Chief of Staff and temporary clerk for the next day or two. So you'll see me here. I have a couple of items to go over. The first is I want to bring to your attention in your packet, you know, you have the legislative tracking chart and that on Friday, we return to the executive ADS proposal 36186. They had the title Regional Coordination and Advisory Board to Address Homelessness. We returned it for lack of sponsorship. It went out twice to you, and no one desired to sponsor it, and so we have returned it to the exec. If you wanted to sponsor it, I would just encourage you to speak with Alice. They can resubmit it, but our normal process is it's out for three days for sponsorship. When we don't have anyone who has elected to sponsor, we put it out again as a second request. And after the conclusion of three days from there, if there's no sponsor, then we return it to the council. And so with the tracker, we did say that we would give you, notify you when something has been returned to the exec and the reason why and that. So there, there's that. The second item I just wanted to bring to your attention, I've seen a few of you have accepted or declined that I've scheduled CPR automatic defibrillator training for August 9th here in the council chamber because I wanted us to have the opportunity, one, to learn, as well as to learn in this environment, since the possibility exists with all the public activities we have, that it may not just be us or staff, it could be someone of the public. And so to just have everyone have that level of preparedness. It's a training that Risk Management offers to all county staff and is in their budget, so it's not, doesn't cost us anything. But if you do want to participate, I would ask that you reply to the the invitation that I sent out because I do need to give the trainers a head count to make sure that they have enough equipment and trainers here are available for the size that we have. But we can, I believe, accommodate up to 20 people. So I just encourage you, if you have an interest in learning that, I know I do. It's been a long time since I've done it, so I want to be prepared. I will do just a general security training in the next week or two here, just to remind everyone about our panic buttons and what our protocols are. It's been about six months since we've done that. To be honest, I am hazy on a few items, so I think it's just good to just every six months sort of refresh ourselves, as well as we have some new staff, so they need to be aware as well. So I'm going to schedule that up, but I'm also going to do and use the PC Warren system as a test. And I'm not going to tell you when I'm going to do it, but I'm going to send out a poll to say, are you receiving this message? Because I've been working with Brenna Price as an, on an update of our continuity of operations plan. And that's something that'll go through, I think, the Public Safety Committee and to council probably sometime in August. But one of them is, is that we're using the PC Warren system to communicate with our staff in the event that there is some emergency. So again, I want to make sure that you are receiving that. And if you're not, you know, it's easy to make that adjustment. But it's also good training for me because I have to be honest, I have forgotten how to do the PC Warren system. I am going to refamiliarize myself with it, as well as incorporate sort of how a how-to, some of their how-to guidance into our COOP plan. Because there may be cases for which I'm not available, and Mr. Taylor may be next in line of succession to use that system. So we're all just need to be aware of just how to use that stuff. And then lastly, you all know that we have two interns this year, Mina Hasani and Tyler Zamera. I met with, I'm meeting with both of them today, but I did meet with Mina this morning. I just want you to be aware of the project that we have assigned to her, and it is to look at sort of our equity notes and our equity note process. It's been about a year since you instituted the equity notes, and so we're asking her to kind of do a review of how, how we've implemented, but also kind of a literature and jurisdictional review of like, what are, what are other partners kind of doing in regards to equity notes? Is there some, some things we can learn? We want to make sure that these are valuable to you and are being done consistently. And so maybe there's some lessons to be learned from our other jurisdictions who are engaged in this. But there will be a component part of her project is talking to the departments, as well as talking to you as the ultimate users as to what do you find valuable, what have you found not to be valuable? And to get your input so that maybe we can act on that, on a future date. Hopefully, maybe Mina is here, but maybe there are some revisions we can do to make the process better for everyone. But having come up on the one year, it seemed timely to do, and it's an area of interest that Mina has. So we've assigned that to her. Her mentors are Carrie and Mike, and they will be helping her kind of develop a work plan. But I wanted to bring it to your attention because you are a component part as the user, you know, the end user of these. She will be talking to you. And I hope you will give her that time. And if not, I will come talk to you. But we do want to get your input and feedback on what has happened thus far, and what do you find valuable or not? So with that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions, members?
There are questions for Ms. Murray. Thank you for all those updates and all that work. Thank you especially for taking our safety, planning, and protocols very seriously here and everything you're doing to make sure that everyone is trained and knows how to use the systems and how to communicate is really important. So thank you very much for all that you just reported on. We are at item number five, Other Business. One item we have here, if folks recall, we had a discussion, I'm trying to recall the venue, rules, thank you. We had a discussion in rules recently, I think it was last week, where there's, we're seeing clarification. The context is we were trying to determine when to set final action for authorizing one of the competitive grant programs. And I believe it was the the Peterson Taxpayer Accountability Act funds. We're really worried that, you know, a lot of the pasta account dollars are for providers to provide summertime programming for there to be safe things to do for, for young people this summer and really trying to get folks under contract so that they can feel confident that they're under contract and can start spending money. And we were concerned about, okay, when is that magic date as to when they can start spending money? Do they need to wait? Do they have a actually inked contract in hand with Pierce County? We know that takes many months. Or is it some other date, like when they were announced that they were recommended for a request for proposal, you know, were selected through a request for proposals process and recommended to council, or is it the council action date? There's, there's so many decision points in the process. There's there's so many decision points in the process. When when does a provider? By by procedure here at Pierce County with our finance procedures. At what point can a provider backdate a contract, knowing that contracting just simply takes many, many months here? That that is the question. We asked Mr. Bookie and the team. To try to get something in writing from finance so that we understand what the procedures are, so that everyone has a common understanding. And Mr. Bookie is here to report back to us.
Thank you, Chair Mello. So the the discussion was at rules last week. And it it did specifically, the discussion surrounding that was about the Puget Sound Taxpayer Accountability Act. Funding recommendations, which you discussed earlier this morning, which is and final on June twenty-fifth. So I sent over to Finance Department a couple of questions. And when are expenditures considered eligible for reimbursement? And then specifically, can contracts be backdated to the date of council approval? And it came back that both Finance and the Prosecuting Attorney's Office have reviewed the question and concur that the contracts can be backdated. To either July first, the date stated in the RFP. Or the date of count the council approves the resolution. So that would then be June twenty-fifth.
Thank you for getting it. Thank you for getting this in writing. A couple of questions. The first question I have is. This answer of the date stated in the RFP. Or the date council approves the resolution. In this case is June is currently scheduled for June twenty-fifth. Whichever is earlier, I would imagine. So July one or in this in this example, June twenty-fifth. Whichever is earlier is the answer for this. Is that is this a standard answer for all competitive grant programs or contracting?
I I don't know that for sure, but I would I would think that because it's kind of generic in the question, it doesn't have to do. Although you have the RFP already written up here, apparently. I don't know that much about this, but.
So in this, I didn't read the.
I think that they've been doing this.
Okay, so my my next question is, I didn't read the request for proposals for for this. In reading the written answer you received back. Is it's it seems like it's standard in a request for proposals posting. When we put out a request for proposals. Said department, in this case, the Human Services Department, says they anticipate funding to be released by this date, in this case, July first. That's a standard. That's a standard procedure for posting requests for proposals. They they state when funding will be available.
I I don't know that.
So if we could just get follow up to that, these are the kinds of questions we get all the time. And so if we could just. Get a follow up, but for we we got the answer for for this one. I think council is trying to understand, you know, systemically, is is this the answer? Routinely so that we can answer questions of the community on a routine basis. Any other questions? Thank you for hunting this down, Mr. Bookie. Does any other members, any members have any other business? Mr. Cox or Ms. Murray, any other business?
None for me.
With no other business before the Pierce County Council, in Monday's study session, we are adjourned.